Lord, as we are in a leadership position, as well as many other leaders in this county, we just ask for your blessings, your wisdom. And your, your direction as we make decisions that fits for the best of the citizens of Adams County. Lord, we ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thanks Doug.
Hey, got the minutes from the August nineteenth meeting. Any additions, corrections, or deletions, guys?
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion Stan.
Second.
Second by Doug, that motion passes. Moving on, Tony.
What have you got for us today?
Okay, let's start with payroll claims. Payroll claims are in the amount of three hundred ninety-five thousand eighty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents. Three ninety-five oh eight three eighty-nine.
I move that we accept the payment of payroll for three ninety-five oh eighty-three eighty-nine.
Second.
Motion by Doug, second by Stan, that motion passes.
Okay.
Next, we have the allied monthly health insurance claims for September. And that's in the amount of the seventy thousand four hundred ninety-two dollars and five cents, seventy-four nine two oh five, and that is the monthly fee.
Any problem, Stan?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Stan, second by Doug, that motion passes.
I didn't stamp it. Fortunately, you do an extra step. I guess I could stamp it.
Tony, did you say the allied, when you just said, did you say it's for September?
Monthly, yes, the monthly, September, it's paid ahead.
Okay, paid ahead.
And then I have the allied weekly health insurance claims. I verified the claimants. And that is in the amount of six thousand nine hundred seven dollars ninety-one cents. That is all medical. There was a small amount of, of uh, stop loss, which, oh gosh, I took it from sixty-eight thirty-five ninety-eight down to sixty-nine oh seven ninety-one for the total.
I moved it, Stan, unless you have an issue. I moved, we approved the allied weekly for six thousand nine hundred seven dollars ninety-one cents, which was all medical.
I'll second that.
Motion by Doug, second by Stan, that motion passes.
And I don't really have anything else, Steve, except for the thing that I handed you that I assume you were gonna do later. Depends on when you wanna do it.
Oh, let's just do it right now. Um, I didn't, I didn't run this past you guys, but we received a request by um, the Soul Water Conservation District to support their, what's referred to as Wings of Adam, Wings of Adams. Uh, and it is a uh, uh, an effort to restore some native pollinator habitats and so on and so forth throughout the county. Um, and this basically is just a, a letter of support to support a grant application they're looking for, for some grant money to support those, those habitat, uh, pollinator habitats and support their, uh, they have a uh, a, a education program called Pollinator Palooza that will, uh, that will help with monarch butterfly installations and so on and so forth. And so Kayla just asked if we would, uh, sign a letter of support for their grant, uh, application. And I told her we would consider that today, so that's the letter, if you guys wanna take a quick look at.
I looked at that in her email, cause she had emailed us and I, I would make a motion to sign a letter of support.
I'll second that.
Is this the form we need to sign, or?
Yeah, we'll ju- you can just sign that letter there on the, on the front and um.
Oh, you mean for our name miss right here?
Yeah, I know Shannon had worked on putting that on our new letterhead and, and we'll, we'll continue to, to work on that, using that new letterhead, so. Well, it would be, it's the, the new logo on it and whatnot. Yeah, so Shannon's working on actually a, a letterhead that would be uh, adaptable by department, so you could have your own auditor department letterhead that would be your, with your name and, and your title. But consistent with the uh, with the new.
You need a sign, Steve.
Oh, whoops, sorry. And Eric, I gave you and Jim a copy of what they just took action on. That's what I,
This thing right here?
That was the, so you should have all the information you need. You just gotta read it, dude.
So Shannon, on that letterhead, as far as I'm concerned, distribute that and, and encourage all of our department heads to begin to use that. I, it's, it's the new logo and, and she actually did one up, I don't know if you guys saw it or not, one for the commissioners with each one of our names on it.
Oh, cool.
Looked pretty sharp. Yeah, I like it. I like it a lot.
She, she did one for me.
Would you, would you send that out to um, to us, uh, for our review approval? Thank you.
And then can you have hats and shirts made too?
And then all like a cup of coffee, uh.
And pizza, big pizza.
County administrator job description. Let's make sure that's, anyway. Okay, um. And, and that's it, Tony, for you?
That's it.
Okay. Nate, what have you got for us this morning?
Too much fun with the logo talk.
I mean, you get a logo on your truck, don't you?
All right, just get you a vinyl decal and then F one fifty, put it on and you will be set.
Yeah, I'd take a new truck, too.
See how that acts.
Uh, I could counsel about it.
We'll work that in. Uh, just real short, couple updates for you. Bridge one eighty, that's on on six fifty west and eight twenty-five south. Judy Excavating did remove the bridge on Monday afternoon, uh, roadway there, obviously to see picture. That's uh, now closed. So unless you're local traffic getting in and out, it's essentially a dead end on, on all four directions. Uh, now, so other than the local traffic, nobody needs to be going down that way, hopefully for the next few weeks.
For pictures now, I, I am officially a licensed commercial drone operator. If you ever need drone pictures, let me know. I'd be happy to come fly my little drone out there and take pictures for you.
There are, there are some fantastic summer circumstances where when we're doing new road projects.
Uh, say you're. Let me know how I can help. I'm just playing with it.
Good social media presence for those is to put those sort of pictures out and give those to the media, so.
As I look at this picture, it definitely looks like a Dukes of Hazzard opportunity to jump. I mean, in, in the distance, it looks like you've got appropriate blockades and everything.
Yep, there's, there's the, you can see the blockades, the barriers right there. There's also barriers, barricades at the, at the connecting road, so you're not gonna come up on this and not have driven by two sets of barricades on there, so.
That is right on county line, isn't it?
Uh, it is. We're just in, yep. So we're just in off of that. So seven west being our,
County line.
Our county line, so it's just, it's just a west there of one sixteen.
It's a pretty rock bottom there?
Yeah, we're hitting a rock in some areas. It's, the rock is actually a little bit deeper than I thought it was. But we've got, we haven't opened it all up. Right there, what we, he's got there was just getting the pipes out and cleaning out some of the mud at the bottom. They were gonna let it drain overnight last night, so I had not been out there this morning, but they're hoping to start getting down to the rock level, bypass pump it, and see what we've gotta do for our footers or the foundation for the arch.
Do they have to go down the bedrock for those?
Yeah, this one will be right on the bedrock. The bridges that they did for me over in Wells County that lead up to this, we were excavating up to two or three feet of rock just to get down to where it needed to be. So, uh, for the foundations here, the rock is quite a bit deeper, um, but with those double pipes, the, the pipes had to be on the rocks somewhere in that, so we'll just kinda see where it's at. That's what I'm, I'm hoping to find out later today, actually.
So you're taking, you took double pipes out, putting single in?
So one big concrete arch.
Arch.
So no more debris getting caught on that. So the maintenance headache, I hate taking out an aluminum pipe, cause they last so long. It's just, it was not the right fit for this. It created a headache and nuisance. It's a shame to have to do it. Thankfully, we're correcting the mistake with some great funds that helps us get out of this nightmare, cause we would have lived with that for very, very long.
So the contractor, he takes the pipes with him?
Yep, they, um, they are not in usable condition.
They're not usable, bent up?
Yeah, there's just, there's no way to get those removed. I get asked, it's like, hey, can we use those? Those would be good ones. There's no suitable way to try to remove that. The, when they were pulling the pipe, and in this picture, you could see one of the double pipes is still in place. You can see just the ends of it.
Yeah.
There is probably sixteen to thousand pounds of mud in the bottom of that. So to try to get that thing lifted, turned and get the mud out of it, it was in pretty rough shape. It, it didn't come out in one piece. It came out in about ten, so then I was out there, so. But now, just, I thought mostly just pictures here, because we're stalled. Uh, lastly, just Bridge ninety-three and the guardrail, HSIP, that's the safety guardrail, if any way, their proposal proposals are still out there. They're open. They are both due the end of next week to me, so I have had some contact from consultants already. I've emailed a number of others to make sure that we're soliciting some responses. Heard back from some, and others I know are working on drafting theirs, so we should be in good shape.
That would appear to be a nice project for somebody that, that's looking for a little bit of ongoing work. That's gonna take quite a while, isn't it? That's a.
Yeah, so ninety-three is actually a very good one. It's a small bridge, shouldn't be, and we've got a lot of prep work that's been done for that. The safety grant, many of the safety grants that were awarded were very small with very limited scope, so there's not much time in it for the consultants. This one, because it's such a large project, even though there's not an exorbitant fee associated with that one, it is multiple bridges. There should be enough to justify some response from some, so I'm expecting to have some, some work. Others are asking as favors to get theirs done.
Okay.
So, oh, Paul, I have any questions for me?
It may be a joint response when Paul comes up too. Uh, any updates on seven hundred?
Uh, that, uh, I know Brad is not here because he is down there right now working on some of that. I know that we had some good conversations with Fleming Excavating on that. They were, certainly they were gonna do the work, and I hope it never came across that we were upset with Fleming. This sort of stuff happens, you know, I, in an abundance of caution, we probably brought up some issues that we were certainly going to deal with with the agreements. So in hindsight, it may tailor how I submit different information to you. Not that I'm keeping secrets, but you know, it's our job to take care of it, and maybe we'll just do our job, and that's okay. So that's not a slam on Fleming. It's more how I need to make sure that I relate to you.
Well, my, my take on the whole thing was, was two things. One point that you just made is this stuff happens, you know, in, in a construction project, this stuff just happens. But the second point is, I think it was handled well. It was handled appropriately. You found it, they corrected it, move on. I, I, I think that's, that's a good takeoff from this.
No, I think kudos to both E and B paving as a sub and to, to Fleming Excavating. Certainly, I don't want anybody to think that we were unhappy with them or thought that they were trying to do bad work for the county. They've had a long reputation for the community, been here for years. And I think for the citizens of Burn, South Adams, and for Adams County should be very proud of the work that they've done, and they've certainly stood up for, for the sort of building that they want built. It's a product for us, so.
Sure. Good, thank you. Thanks Nate.
Thank you.
Oh, what's happening today?
How much today?
Got our monthly draw for the day. Put that in for the record, and then some updates, and that's about it.
Okay.
I'm just starting with that monthly draw here. Uh, we got NVH, and NVH restricted, uh, for one eighty-five, one thirty-eight, twenty-three. One eighty-five, one thirty-eight, twenty-three.
Looks like that's down, but it looks like for month of August is routinely down, isn't it?
Yeah, it looks like it's, is down every year.
Yeah.
So August must be better.
Not only down, it's down significantly. You want us to approve one at a time or both of them?
Might as well do them both at the same time. It's fine with me if it's all right with you, so.
Yeah.
We got our local roads and streets there on the backside, uh, for twenty-seven thousand six hundred forty-one forty-seven. Twenty-seven thousand six hundred forty-one dollars and forty-seven cents.
Consistent drop too, every August.
Yeah, isn't that, isn't that interesting? August must just be weird.
I don't see a thing why we should not accept both of those reports.
Yeah, no, I'd make a motion to enter it into record.
Second, motions made by Stan, second by Doug, that motion passes.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, I think we got pretty, we finished chip seal Monday, about Monday.
Congratulations.
Cool.
Chip seal season is over. We'll continue patching and doing muggy troughs and stuff like that, but our,
We seem like we've seen, uh, more, more stone. Are, are you using a larger amount of stone?
Um, actually, this year, we cut the stone way back, uh, as opposed to normal. There just seemed like there was a lot of loose stone. We swept some of the intersections back up north. I think, uh, a lot of the folks that are up in the north part of the county, they don't see chip seal out but once every eight or nine years, as opposed to the ones in the south, they see it.
Oh.
Two or three, so they get, they're a little more, uh, I wanna say.
Concerned.
Uh, concerned, uh, observant of the different stone. The residents in the south part of the county, they're, they're like, oh, they're chipping again, and they move on. Traffic, you know, traffic works that off to the sides, and if we get some extreme cases, we try to sweep.
What was your total miles? See, you ended up.
Hundred and six this year.
Hundred and six.
Yeah, we normally average around seventy-five to eighty. This year, since we pulled the plug early last year with our equipment trouble, we I just added on this year, so that's a, that's a lot of miles, so.
Good deal.
Have to bring your. Flyovers is why we're doing it.
I do, I will do that. I will do that. I'd like to do that.
That's it for the distributor. That's, it's done. Well, other than the minor leagues.
Right, other than patching and stuff, but yeah, we, we made it through the big season. We had a few issues here and there, but we've managed to get through them and, and move on, so I, I was very pleased that we were able to cover all our mileage this year and do it in a timely fashion and, and, uh, not have too many headaches.
Got your moors still going, right?
Mowers are still going. Uh, actually, now chip seal's over, you'll, you'll see quite a few more mowers out there again, cause I ended up pulling all but one mower during chip seal, so I can have them and trust their equipment to get, get chip seals.
For the last week of four day?
Uh, be October the eighteenth, I think. Uh, we run through Columbus Day, so that.
Oh, yeah, okay, I was thinking.
Columbus Day is, uh, that week, I think we go to eight hours. Columbus Day is on a Monday, so we'll have four eight-hour days, and then we start our five, so.
So you got a few, a few weeks of.
Update on seven hundred south?
Seven hundred south, Brad's down there now. We're waiting. Comcast put in a new pole. I think it was Comcast put a new pole. They never moved the wires to the new pole. Of course Fleming and, and E and B are waiting on that pole to move, so they can finish their work. So Brad was sitting down there. They were supposed to have their subcontractors out there this morning moving that, so he was, his objective for the day was, I'm sitting here until this pole moves, and I said, well, we'll see you next week.
So they're, so once they get the pole moved and everything, you're ready to put their surface on and.
They can finish, they can finish that, that intersection there with twenty-seven. They should be able to wrap it up fairly quickly after that. There's just a few things that they're buttoning up, but I, I mean, I was down there yesterday and it looks, it looks really good.
Now, are they, do that, does that stretch, get lines on it?
Uh, I don't, I kinda assume they'll align that, but I don't know. I, I can't answer for sure. I don't know how it was, how it was bid out. Nate, do you remember?
What's that?
They're gonna straighten that section at one fifty, or seven hundred.
I'm gonna get, I believe we've got skip lines.
Skip lines?
Most of the intersections, but I don't think we, uh, we don't have a, a no passive study on that, so I don't think we've got too much other than just the skip on the side. And where the curbers, no, where there's any edge lines.
That's all I have. I don't.
Very good.
One other thing, I got one more thing. Uh, we're putting up our no through truck signs that we got you guys approved, uh, for the one sixteen project, uh, just west of Geneva. So, um, our guys are out putting up signs. They started that today, so.
Okay, now, what's happening west of Geneva? I didn't notice the signs.
Right down in the, in the belly, as you're coming out of town, uh, they're replacing that pulver pipe.
Okay.
So they'll have that closed.
So one sixteen will be down a while.
It'll be down a while. Um, they said something like November, December. Thought that seemed kinda long to replace that, but, but, so the no through truck signs will go on all the surrounding roads, trying to keep them off there, um.
There'll be some tomato trucks.
That was supposed to start September second or after, so I don't know exactly when that'll start, but it's coming.
Yeah, I saw the signs.
Good.
That's all I got for you.
Thanks, Paul. Uh, Rick is not here yet. Run a little early, um.
Yeah. Sheriff, Eric, have anything to say?
Well, I, I have, uh, through the budget meeting, um, they approved the budgets, which allowed a new deputy for twenty, uh, twenty-six. So I guess I'd ask your permission that I can advertise to hire that person beginning of January twenty-sixth.
What, what will? It's just a road deputy, or where's that deputy gonna be?
It's a road deputy, but one of the pre-existing deputies, we're opening up that second detective spot, so he's gonna be filling, filling in the, the gap at the second detective. But it will be a, a detective, or it'd be a deputy's position.
And that's in your budget for twenty-six, right? So you just need to, need an action from us to allow you to begin to advertise for that position.
New hire, so I need your permission for the new hire. Job description changes, pre-existing, all that existing.
Shannon, are you okay with that? Okay, I think, guys.
Yeah, sounds, sounds like it's needed. I, I guess I'll move that the sheriff proceed with the advertisement that's necessary for the deputy coming up.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Any, are, are you, I'm trying to think where we're at as far as having a, a dedicated I A T person for the sheriff.
Uh, we, we've had that going this year already. Uh, Christian Beckingham, uh, working, learning, doing well, uh, working along well with Mike. Mike is giving him more and more access to things as he learns from Mike and Mike learns from Christian and what his capabilities are, so it's, it's moving along very well.
Good, thank you.
Anything else, Sheriff?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Eric? Okay, thank you. Thanks for coming.
Hey Dan, you're gonna make one current detective into a detective, and then the new deputy gonna fill that, that open spot.
Correct, correct.
Don't be a hell of a detective.
Just happy to be here.
Right now, we have eighteen sworn, nineteen sworn, on here again. In twenty-six.
So we're better than being in a, in a deposition?
Two detectives in twenty-six.
I can briefly let you know what.
And Eric.
That's everybody. We have eighteen as a breakdown, and in twenty-six, we'll have nineteen.
My week up.
Okay.
Yeah, so if the county has work, it's done. I'll do it all this week.
My slip, you know, my slip. Clayton officially, you don't have anything for us?
Then.
Fifteen on the route.
Fifteen on, well, okay, how many on the, um, I can't even think of the name. Not, not foreign in deputies, but.
Merritt.
Yeah, how many?
Merritt deputies?
Yeah.
Uh, Merritt deputies, there'll be, there's seventeen now, cause I'm not a Merritt. Uh, so there's, everybody else, every deputy existing now is a Merritt deputy. There'll be eighteen. And the new deputy hired in January will have a year probation before he can be deputy, uh, Merritt. So he won't be Merritt until, uh, twenty-seventh.
And then you have a reserve force.
Reserve is no longer. That was eliminated, uh, last year because of the constraint, uh, training requirements, uh, that are put on by the, the state that requires so much training, um, there's the guys who need to have the training done, which opens up, uh, liability to myself and the county. Uh, we only had three at the time, and maybe two when I actually canceled the program, so we do not have a sheriff reserve program.
So if, if the need ever came from additional personnel without that reserve force, where would you go for to bail yourself out for a short period of time?
Uh, other departments that we have too, that, that'll help out, uh, just like we do now, uh, and they do, uh, the reserve programs and most agencies are going away because of the requirement, the training that they have to keep, uh, honestly, the liability, because they don't do it full-time, and then they get into something, and it's just, they can't be used like we used to use them. Uh, so, uh, they, they literally are, are going away. Some of the larger departments still have them, uh, but most of the smaller agencies are no longer. I think Decatur has a reserve, but I think they have one or two reserve officers, that's it. Uh, it's just, it's, it's a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of dedication for somebody to do that, a lot of risk to take for somebody to do that for free, honestly.
So if, to Doug's point, if, if there were need for additional resources, do you, are you ever in any situation able to use your C O's for additional personnel outside the jail?
Um, yes and no. Um, right now, uh, my C O's that are twenty-one years of age and older, uh, part of their job trip, they are special deputy, but their powers that I give them only are able to read and serve warrants and protective orders and paper service in the jail. Otherwise, they'd have to call a deputy and off the road to come in and do that, so. Uh, but other than that, not much. They don't have the training to be doing direct, I mean, they don't have the training to drive a truck in a crash scene. So, no, they're, they're, their special deputy powers are limited to inside the jail, uh, with, uh, basically serving papers, warrants and technical orders and things like that.
C O's, I, I just text.
Uh, corrections officers in the jail.
We have three court security people that get training too, but again, they don't have cars and things like that. Um, honestly, we'll be relying on, if something would come up, let's say we have, or a tornado or something comes through here, I rely on other agencies, uh, we have the sheriff's office in Wells County, Jay County, Blackford County, Allen County, I can call them, I can get bodies down here to cover, and then I'd also send bodies up there to cover, so we do that without having written documents. I, I make a phone call, and I have, I have bodies here to help us.
While, while we're tap dancing here a little bit, waiting on Mark to get here, um, how, how is, how are you doing with, um, federal prisoners? And I know you've, you still have federal prisoners out there. About how many do you, I know that you weren't prepared to give us a report, but.
Um, I think we are up to seventeen now. Uh, our numbers are coming back up. Uh, I've had good conversations with the, the marshal's office saying, uh, I wanna get back to twenty, and they're, they're fine with that. For some reason, they thought we wanted to stay low and make sure they understand that. Uh, so that's going well. We do the transportation, uh, to court for the marshals. Um, there's been talk, you might hear, as far as the ICE detainees. Uh, I'm not interested in that, because there's other formal training that you have to go through and do that, two eighty-seven G program. Um, and right now, I think there's only two counties in the state you're doing it, Hamilton and, uh, Noble County. Um, but ICE did come and get, uh, somebody last Sunday, or it's the first person I've known ICE to actually detain in my six and a half years of doing this right now. Um, but normally, the people that we have, they're in for very non-violent, uh, crimes. They're, they're usually never operated, driving without a license, things like that, so they're not issued those. They're interested in the violent people, and uh, this person was charged with something that met their standards, and they actually came and got them. They put a hole on them, and they came and got them.
Good, very good. Rick, come on up.
One other thing I'll just bring up, uh, something for the news media too. There's been some talk about the, the DOC opening up beds for, uh, ICE detainees at Wabash Valley. They said they have a thousand beds there. Um, the sheriff's association is a little upset about that, because we have usually anywhere between twelve hundred and fifteen hundred DOC prisoners that are staying in our jails, that you don't get paid enough for. Uh, but now, all of a sudden, they have a thousand beds that they can put ICE detainees in, so, uh, we're dealing with that in-house with the I S A and letting our legislators know that, uh, something's wrong with this, that.
Sure.
We can take care of that, but we can't take care of our own.
Yeah.
The locals are paying the brunt of it, because, yeah, they're only paying us forty-two, forty-two dollars a day, and.
So we have to supplement that.
I'm sure the state's gonna get a lot more than that for a federal detainee, so, uh, but we're working through those maze, uh, politics under the I S A, and uh, but we let our local legislators know we're not real happy about it.
Okay, good.
What's our, what's our actual cost for the, for a day?
Um, we did a study through I S A, and an average between a large, medium, and small jail, we averaged it out to about, I think it was ninety-two dollars is what it costs the DOC, the nets it costs them, I think. Somewhere around that same, same price, uh, so what incentive do they have to get them out of our jail when they're paying us forty-two dollars a day, when they know if they have them in their facilities, it'll cost them ninety dollars a day?
Right.
There's no incentive.
Right.
Uh, we tried making it in the legislation incentive-based over time. The longer we have, the more you have to pay us. Uh, but that didn't get through, uh, in the budget. The, the raise from thirty-seven fifty to forty-two, that, that's what they sell. Uh, so it's, it's a battle that we're still navigating, and we'll wait it again in two years, uh, the state budget, uh, when it comes up again.
Good, thanks. Thanks, Sheriff. Rick, what have you got for us this morning?
As far as late, I.
No, you're late. You're round time. Exactly. On demand of money.
Phil, I believe he had a family or something.
Oh, shoot.
He was some stuff.
Okay.
I don't know if you guys remember that you guys approved me to get the. Don't know if you guys remember that you guys approved me to get the network hooked up to the generator. The conduits ran, but water's not here yet. So that's, we're headed out, I think, um. I don't want to steal John Summers' thunder, but the flag's up on the.
Is it?
Courthouse.
Cool. Cool?
I don't think, uh, you know, the, the operational power that one's done yet.
Okay.
It's up to.
It's flying, huh?
I just wanted to make sure.
They had the crane in, in here then to do that?
Yeah, he called me yesterday and said, hey, the crane's here. I said, okay.
What crane, huh?
Yeah, anyway, um. It, it, they got up there and took down, uh, two mechanisms, because it took both, they were steel.
Okay.
And he had them, um, fabricated engine statements.
Okay.
It took a while to get that.
There you go. Eric, Jimmy, here's a picture for you.
I got some picture, I took some.
Great.
You were during the rainstorm, I got soaked out, it was freezing cold.
Anyway, it, it is up there. I just, I wanted to ask you guys too, I mean, right now, we got three flags flying over there.
Okay.
The one in front, we wanted the big one, it's the biggest one we have, we wouldn't change that, right?
We do. And, and we just want to go with the state flag on that, isn't that what we kind of talked about?
Well, what are the three we got right now? The United States flag, the.
Three U S flags.
Three U S, oh, three U S.
I, 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 I thought as long as the army was on top, we'd be, I'd be fine with that.
Well, I got a word.
I get it.
Do we want, what do you want, Marines and Army?
Yeah, Marines and Army. Make sure, make sure you alphabetically.
Put the Navy one up top. Navy ones up there.
We better just stick with the.
Better stick with the Indiana flag.
You know, Decatur, Decatur's got a flag, I think the county should have a flag too.
Yeah, until I get.
Okay, so you got three flags, okay? The, the American flag's up on top. The, where American flag was, is gonna be the Indiana?
Yeah, the one up front.
Yeah, okay, and then what's the third one?
It's back where the monument is, there's a flag, you know where the names scriptures are?
Yes.
There's one.
There's a flag on that monument. And I think we're okay with it.
We're okay with that, yeah.
We're okay with that.
Um, I don't know, should, should I leave the, the one out front up until I get that?
Yeah, yeah, until you get the Indiana flag in.
Take it down.
I, I don't know, what do you, I, I, I was always.
If you want, want to, well, we already got them, we already have two.
Yeah, I only ever wanted one, one, one flag, one, one primary flag, and then the one on top, the courthouse now is a primary flag. I'm not so sure we don't take that one down until we get, until we get the state flag in for it. I think that would be appropriate protocol, just have one down.
I wonder what size, is the one on top, the one that's on top of courthouse, is that a larger, uh?
It's pretty small.
Where the brahmins were, it's five by eight, it's just like the one here at the complex, and then the one back where the scriptures are, that monument. The one out front was an eight by twelve.
Yeah.
It, it was bigger.
Sure.
Yeah. But I'll take that one down until I get.
I think so, yeah. I, I, I don't think we want two courthouse flags flying, U S flags. I, I know, that, that one, that one was for the monument.
Okay.
All right.
What's that, Eric?
Said you can always do P O W on the.
M I A, P O W.
Do that too. Oh, yeah, that's the good, that's not a bad idea.
Um, so I, I bless you guys, guys.
Did, did you have an opportunity to meet with Brad Weber and on that new space or different space?
Did that very day, which was, I think now we'll, we'll be on week two.
Right.
He said he'd get with me when he had some time.
Okay.
So I haven't spoke to him since.
Okay, good.
No, okay. Not to belabor this flag thing, but, okay, you see there's an eight by twelve?
On, on the front lawn.
On the front lawn, and what's up on top right now?
Five by eight.
Why don't we put the large eight by twelve up top? Or is it?
That probably won't fit.
Yeah, I bet it's just built for that.
It's built for the.
Five by eight, I got it, all right.
Brahmins are.
Okay.
Because the flag actually goes down inside the flag pole.
Yeah.
So if you put a big one in there, it gets stuck in the.
Okay. Those.
Yeah.
You have bigger flag out front in the lawn, you have the one on top and the one in back.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Rick.
Making some room on one, one should be.
Okay, good deal.
Hey, thanks for coming, Clayton. I wasn't sure if you guys would be here or not, so.
Yeah, I've worn Clayton on it, but, uh.
Schedule change.
Change in that piece of litigation, so no depositions this week.
Good. Good deal.
You can leave now, no.
Shannon, have you got anything for us until Mark gets here?
I do, um.
And I also, I don't have anything though, so you guys have specific questions for me on anything?
Okay. Might have, might have something after the meeting.
Okay.
So last week, I sent you guys an email about our ancillary benefits for twenty twenty-six, which is everything other than medical insurance, dental vision and life. Um, so I just wanted to touch base and see if you guys were ready to, uh, make a move on those for next year, or if you wanted to give it some more thought and we get you some more information on what our options are.
All right, the recommendation is to stay with our dental plan, but change vision, change vision providers in life.
Yep, yep. So my recommendation is to stay with Delta Dental for twenty twenty-six, even though there's a slight increase on employee premiums. They have continued to show that they have the best network to get us the best rates for our actual utilization. Um, so who our employees actually go see. And then for life and vision, um, we were quoted a pretty steep discount on the life plan and just a slight increase on the vision plan with Sun Life. Um, they use the same network that, uh, Delta Vision currently uses, so there would be no disruption in terms of utilization. And then with life insurance, that's mostly that employees don't really deal with that anyways. Um, but they're offering same coverage, same cost, same everything, uh, on the life side for what employees currently have, so they wouldn't see a disruption there. And then should you opt to approve, uh, Sun Life for both of those lines, they would work with us to subsidize the cost of a benefits administration enrollment platform that we could use in twenty twenty-six, which is offered by an organization called the Case and Group. So I have both of those contracts, uh, with me too. One of them is that if we paid full price, it would be three dollars per employee per month. And then if we were to opt to go with Sun Life and, um, for Vision and Life, then it would be one dollar per employee per month. So they would subsidize two-thirds of the cost.
So it'd be a hundred and fifty-ish dollars a month, a hundred and eighty-ish, a hundred and ninety dollars a month? And tell me, to, tell me what that gives you us?
This is a, an online platform that we would use to administer benefits in terms of like the paperwork. So an employee versus having an, uh, paper form that they would complete with me to make a selection, either during a new hire period, open enrollment, or for, um, or if they have a qualifying life event, they would do it on this website. And it's obviously something I would help them with yet still, but then this website would take all of their information and it would pass it through to our carriers. So instead of me sitting and entering, hand-entering all of the information five, six, seven times when I hire somebody, it would automatically go through.
Why would we not, uh, not take her recommendation?
I don't know.
Sounds good.
I, I, it does sound good. Now, did you say, did you say Sun Life would supplement that just for the first year or for each year that we're with them?
It's my understanding that as long as we are with Sun for however many lines of coverage, then there's a subsidy available with the Case and Group for their.
And, yeah, maybe.
Trouble moving forward with her. No, I, I'm just kind of looking over your, your email here and it looks like Sun Life is the way to go as far as, you know, offering the best for option for our employees for the best cost, so.
And I, I knew that, that we take Shannon's recommendations so she can move forward on, on this.
Yeah, I guess that seems like it makes the most sense.
Is that a second stand?
Yep, that's, yep.
And then, like I said, I have this contract with the Case and Group, I sent it to Mark Clayton yesterday, it's just a one-pager. Um, I have both of them, so I'll have you guys look over and if you're comfortable, sign the one that's the dollar, not three dollars.
Okay.
And I, I just responded to you, but.
You're good.
Yeah, sorry, I reviewed, I reviewed it yesterday, but I forgot to give you a response, so I apologize.
It's just, um, are, are we, are we okay with signing this contract then with, with the Case and Group for that, uh, administrative, online administration?
I, yeah.
So we need a separate motion for that? I don't know.
I included it in the motion.
Good deal, good deal.
How do you spell Caso?
C A S O N.
I guess just.
Share, it's just me.
Um, the only other two things that I have was I wanted to ask you guys if you'd be okay with me spending, um, some of the funds from the health insurance fund to send a postcard to the staff this year for open enrollment as a save the date. Um, U S I is gonna actually do the legwork for me, we just have to pay for postage. So I, as long as you're okay with that, I'll work with Tony Glenda to get that billed, um, but it shouldn't be a, a ton. And then I do have a five-year pay that has come up, we had an employee have a personal injury and she'll be out for a couple of weeks. She does not have enough time to cover, um, all of her time off, so I reached out to her and she's interested in taking advantage of that.
I made the motion to approve that.
Second.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Quick question.
Yes.
On your email about your vacation?
Yes.
I'm almost wondering if rather than have somebody try and contact you in an urgent situation, whether we could offer a backup uh, from somebody that was on site, whether, whether it was our attorney or whether it was auditor's office or somebody, rather than have you feel like you have to answer emails or, or texts while you're on vacation? Is, is there something else that we could offer, uh, for somebody in an urgent situation?
Um, they can always reach out to Tony. Um, I think that Tony would be able to get through a prescription issue if he'd be, he'd know who to reach out to handle that, um, if it comes down to it. The workplace injury one is a little bit more tricky. Um, I'm the only one that has access to the reporting portal, I believe, I think they have accounts, but I don't know if we trained up on that. Um, but most of the time with a workplace injury, I can at least wait until I get back in order to like report it to Eastern Alliance. And if push comes to shove, I could always just forward the email to our contact at Eastern Alliance and say, hey, I'm out of town, this is going on, can you please take care of this? And I'm sure he wouldn't have an issue with it.
Okay.
Most of.
Well, and, and I, I guess for two reasons, I didn't want to put an employee, uh, if, if they couldn't get a hold of you, uh, put them in a time, time-critical situation.
Right.
And the other thing is, when you're on vacation, I don't want you to feel like you have to be working when you're on vacation. So the, you know, so maybe just kind of see what, what we can do that way.
I think that most of our departments who have injuries all know, and care, um, I think they're well-versed now enough to know what to do in that situation. So I don't think you have any issues, but I will, I will put something in place just.
Got you.
Thank you.
Keep talking, Stan, I'm trying to figure out if that feedback is coming from this other microphone or not, so.
Okay, blah, 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 blah.
It's, and the feedback's still there.
I thought maybe, because I thought maybe my computer's set too close to this thing.
There you go.
I think it's.
Now it's worse.
Was that where it's coming from? Same thing or something? It's gone.
That one's a drone.
Try it now.
Hey, I, this is too close.
Oh.
The other day we had a problem when we moved this, when we were doing our night.
Uh.
I can ask Ethan to look at why that.
It's just Stan's microphone for some reason.
I can ask Ethan.
At the end, we, we moved that and it stopped, I don't know.
That'll be darn.
Well, as long as it works for karaoke tonight.
I'm, okay, Eric, what are you gonna do?
Not gonna touch the microphone.
Wouldn't that beat the hell out of us?
Okay, what you got for us, Mark?
Got three subdivisions. All right, it's simple.
Okay. My will stop the ground.
That's rude, Brian.
Okay.
So Van Horn subdivision. We took this one single piece of property, it's in blue, this was already broke out, now it's three properties. One, two and three. Two hundred Salem Road, so connected. Right there's private race.
Really? Okay.
Here, here.
Right, right next to that open ditch, huh? That, that is an open ditch, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, sir.
That is the March ditch.
March ditch.
Yeah.
Got access, uh, design committee went through it, real good.
Access to roads.
Will we, will we accept the Van Horn?
Second.
Okay, motion passes.
Has there ever been a, a decline of one of these things? I've never seen one decline all year, I've been doing this, they're always, they're so well-vetted, you know?
Yeah.
Good indication that Mark's doing his job and the design committee's doing theirs.
Okay.
Yep.
I wanted to live there in that industry.
I'll let, I, we, we.
You were far?
Yeah, yeah. Yep.
Your dad's a farmer.
Well, that's just good to hear, I never knew Steve had any bringing up.
And this is, and this is right, Mike, right, same.
Same.
Same, same spot, then the other part, it was just north of here, now this is. I was actually, I was actually born in the house, it said right here.
That's what a Bailey, Bailey week.
Benjamin Falls subdivision.
So what, what's he got there?
North Salem Road, they literally took that chunk out of this whole square. So it was a twenty-acre piece.
Why the diagonal property line?
They avoided the gas line, they technically could have went across it and it wouldn't have mattered, but they just didn't.
So, uh, okay, so he's, you're just separating two and a half acres off of, uh.
Of forty, or twenty, right.
Of twenty.
Yes, sir.
The, move, do we accept the, uh, Benjamin, what is it, Benjamin Fault?
Yeah, so that.
Proven second, right?
Yep, yep.
Okay, motion passes. That's also the March ditch coming through there.
That's already, they've already got a barn, a condominium.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go out there, a little bit out there in a while, see what's going on out there.
Myers, Myers building.
Territory. Probably build a new house.
Going out there, Steve, he's getting. Yeah.
Built the other.
You, you.
Usual, they're all on the north side. Doesn't happen very often.
Yeah.
Joseph Baker subdivision, so one hundred west, three hundred north, two lots subdivision, this rectangle. Doesn't have the, what it started as on there. And, um.
Was it eighty, now they're gone, thirty, fifty?
Thirty and fifty.
Even number.
That's where the building's at, right, Joe's property.
Yep, right here.
Okay.
On the north side.
Joe Baker's done all the, he's done all the soil.
Yeah.
Decades and decades.
Is he, he's not doing that anymore?
Yeah, he still is, yes, he's still.
He's, see, I graduated with M C to be my age.
Well, call dirt once and you'll get a lecture. You gotta call soil, but you get in trouble.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion passes.
He's actually living in the brown.
That's one, that's one of those guys that took that, he, he was, uh, all, all through high school, he was an ag guy, soil, did soil judging, all that stuff. And he turned that into a profession and he's, he's done that his whole life a lot. Took that soils work from.
How many, how many, uh, different, like Drew Bakers are out there that you can't, you use?
I, I'm not sure, because they have, the health department has a list.
Jay County did it.
No, he's not anymore, there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a guy from Indy named Mark, and there's a new gal that's doing it, and then Joe, and that's who he. Mark and Kane.
What else have you got for us, Mark?
That is it.
Okay. Thank you.
Unless somebody can tell me, I can do something with the house on two twenty-four. Not yet.
It's not us, Mark.
I know, I'm just, I'm just asking you for that.
I'll call the Court of Appeals.
It's.
Call the court, and they didn't act like there was any interference, drove me nuts.
The Court of Appeals? Or, well, that's.
The courthouse.
Well, yeah, and they, well, they don't, again, it's the Court of Appeals now because she initiated that appeal. So now it's just waiting for that timing to run, and then it's, you know, somebody in their office remembering to file an order saying it's dismissed.
Well, we're waiting for Stan to come back. On, on, on these we just signed, when, okay, that's. Well, we're waiting for Stan to come back, on, on, on these we just signed, when, okay, does Mike Worthing still do plot book?
Yep.
Okay, so when will those actually go in, those changes go into the plot book?
Oh, I, I literally walked these up to the, to the auditor's office right now, and then I don't know how quickly they take them.
It just depends on, as soon as he can get to them, he's got a big tote up there with other ones.
Which it takes a little less time for him to do what he does because he's looking at them, he's on the design committee.
Okay, so he knows.
So he's kind of, he's already kind of looked them over and there's usually not much going on after, you know.
He knows ahead of time.
Yeah, he, he gets to see them earlier than he used to, let's say. Yep.
Good.
That's something that we, we kind of take for granted, that all this ends up, we're supposed to be and plotted like it's supposed to be, so.
You know, it was, it was such a big deal for a while and then we got Mike figured out how Mike could do that and now it just happens.
Happens.
And I can tell you, we, there are a lot of counties do the electronic, they don't keep up the plat books, title searchers. Clayton might be able to attest to this, title searchers enjoy coming to our county because we still do the plat book that way, uh, they can do an actual title search much easier. So keep up with it, yes.
It's really easy.
Good, okay, good deal, um, anything from the public, anybody have anything? Okay, guys, what else have you got, Forrest?
I don't have anything.
Stan, Doug, nothing, I don't know that I have anything, uh, for a motion adjourned.
So move, second.
Motion passive, we're adjourned.